Our heavenly Father, we coming for you tonight and God we thank you for this school, this institution, Lord, for each and every man and woman here tonight. And we pray for your wisdom to be in this place, God. I pray that you would just encourage each of the administrators, the teachers, Lord, as they serve, and Lord, just give them grace and patience with the students and, Lord, wisdom to lead as needed. And, Lord, I know many times decisions that have to be made at the board meeting can be difficult and heavy, and, Lord, I just pray that you would lighten that load for them and give them clarity and unity. And, Lord, I thank you for this place, for what it's meant to me, my family, our community. And I do pray, Lord, that you would just give it great days ahead and you would guide the Lord tonight, that you just oversee each decision. And, Lord, we thank you for all things, and most of all, we thank you for Jesus Christ. It's in his name we pray your blessings upon this meeting, Jesus. Amen. The name of the class is nine, is the North Lamar High School Student Council. Where are you gathering?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
This time, this will take us down to item number three, recognition of student and staff. Dr. Adams and Carla Coleman will take care of this. And you, all the students and parents, we appreciate y'all coming, and you're more than free to leave afterwards if you want to.
So, January is Board Appreciation Month, and I know all the campuses, some of the different departments and stuff have got some posters and cards and goodie bags for you guys, and we're very appreciative of those things. I think some students also want to say a few things to you before we get out of here for your recognition. But we also wanted to, in the hustle and bustle of what we do, you know, we want to remind everyone that what we're in the business is of educating kids and taking care of kids. And so, we've got a lot of staff members here tonight, we've got a lot of kids here tonight that just want to walk by, shake your hand, and say thank you for what you do. So, you guys will come up here with me, and we're going to let these guys, we'll get our picture taken real quick, and then we'll let them run and go.
[laughter]
Okay, so David has something that he wants to raise to us. He wants to turn around, lay with his hands raised.
We are Everett Elementary's third grade leadership committee. People like to thank each of our school board members for your hard work, dedication, and service to our North Lamar School District. This banner that we are presenting to you cannot, has been signed by all the students at Everett Elementary, and it's our way to saying thank you to each of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We have a special guest from daily intermediate, Miss Molly Martin. And before she gets her polling to the Board of Appreciation, and before that, we've had some of our classes make cards for you, so if I will let those stay up in the library, we'd like for those to be all mounted up there and put them on cards.
Score. Definition. Place of reference, which is to let we grow and understand. Truth be taught, scores to us have a much, much bigger meaning. If we think it's an important place for us to work, a place for others. Score. Definition. Students having supervisory powers, position that means that work for hours can add. But truth be taught, the boards to us have a much, much bigger meaning. It represents a people people involved in our community. It's hard for kids to understand the kind of work you do, day by day, the problems, stress, the numbers for review, interviews, research, the value of things, the lessons of learning, quality of practice. But we think that's part of the other thing for us, and we'll try to express this gratitude without being super hurt. Because this day comes once a year, the rest are overdue, but tonight we found our three months of safety.
Thank you. [applause]
This is the Board of Appreciation, the Transportation Department. We always like to thank the Board for everything they do. We've got a clause to sign by all the bus drivers, so thank y'all for what you do. But also, they're giving me a moment to recognize Mr. Ron Jackson. Mr. Jackson came to work with us three years ago by demand of his wife, Joyce Jackson, who was sitting there in the hospital. She said, they're in dire need of bus drivers, so he's a retired president, vice president, worker in plants across the United States. He worked here locally for about fifteen years, I believe, and then went to California. And they came back to live here in Paris and be a part of our community. And he came on board and helped us out. He does an excellent job taking care of the kids, but he does an impeccable job of paperwork, taking care of his bus. Every day, he empties his trash, he sweeps his bus all the time, and he just goes an extra mile for our district and our kids. So, we want to tell him thank you and give, he's our December Bus Driver of the Month, and he has a burning gift to give.
Yay. [applause] Again, thanks for all the campuses that recognized the Board this evening. We appreciate it. That takes us down to number four, public comments. Public comment, this is a time for anyone in attendance to provide comments to the Board. Statements from the audience will not be permitted during any other portions of this meeting, so please let us hear from you now if you have comments to present. For your comments to be heard, your name and the subject matter of your comments must be written on the sign-in sheet provided prior to the beginning of this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to complete his or her comments, as the presiding officer will strictly enforce that time limit. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the Board asks that a spokesperson be designated to avoid needless repetition. The Board shall allow no more than thirty minutes for the public comment portion of this meeting. The Board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open forum by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint, meeting after meeting. In the event your comment and the judgment of the presiding officer constitutes a complaint against an employee or officer, the presiding officer will interrupt and ask you to stop, and I will direct you to proceed to the district form of agreements procedure, DGBA, FNG, or GF local. With these cautions in mind, we will now be glad to hear the general comments. Please state your name and the subject that you wish to speak on the record. Dr. Winfrey, I believe you've signed up?
Yes, I did.
Yes, ma'am, you're first.
All right. I'm just going to follow up on something that Mr. Weatherford addressed back in the hall. Generally having to do with long-range goals for the district. Okay, so obviously, any organization needs to have long-range goals, particularly the school district. And I understand that at some point, these goals will include a bond election again. However, one major component seems to be missing whenever we have a discussion about future plans and whatnot. And that component is not money, it's not votes, it's people. All right. Until there's a true understanding of exactly what North Lamar ISD is, will there be any congress? Who are the people? Well, the main people are the back clean staffs of the school that make up the districts. Why are these people important? Well, obviously, they are the ones that are in the trenches every day, doing the best work with every child, from the struggling student to the brainiac, from wiping the runny noses for the little ones, to hearing all the drama with their high school kids because of their boyfriend or girlfriend. Where do these people come from? Well, just at the high school campus. Twenty-five percent of the staff are North Lamar graduates. Why did they come back to work here? Because it's home, and because this is their community. When voters in North Lamar ISD go to the polls in any kind of election, they first ask us, what's going on? Is this really necessary? Are you all happy with the way things are going? And without the support of the teachers and staffs of the schools, no bond election, no matter how badly needed, will ever pass. So, here's our question. Is that support present at this time? And the answer is no. Teachers and staff feel that they are not shown respect that professionals deserve. They feel that very often their input is ignored. We walk into the building not knowing whose program has been gutted at this point, who has been reassigned, whose workload has doubled or tripled. We've already endured an excess of teachers and students, and we're about to experience another one. Unfortunately, it seems that our leadership is content to lose staff. Mrs. Brown Counselor, it's a big black eye for us, Mr. Gerald Watbury, another one, highly successful UIL academic program, narrowly escaped this memory, and a former North Lamar teacher who finished teaching a class for us after her semester at Carriage Senior College ended, was at first told that she would receive no compensation at all. So, in our department, the English department at the high school, we lost an excellent teacher last year, overwhelmed by huge classes in an end-of-course testing year. Has that situation been remedied? No. Both our freshman and sophomore English teachers whose students take an end-of-course test, that includes writing, that includes grading those essays, have a hundred and fifty-plus students. But that's okay, because that is within the range of the college. So, I can tell you that we're going to lose another great teacher this year in our department for the same reason. A school district is only as busy teachers and staff, they, not the buildings, make the difference in student learning and student success. And until North Lamar teachers and staff are treated as professionals, will the people in the North Lamar community be ready to support teacher goals and this influence of our students?
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Richardson.
I'm going to step away from the school board for a second. Sorry, right here, right here, Red. Okay. Today, I come before you as not a board member, but as a parent and someone who's followed North Lamar softball for years. First of all, I believe everyone that's been associated with North Lamar ISD appreciates Coach Alden George and his many accomplishments to our district. Most of you know, there's been a lot of talk about this lately, so I would just like to clear the air from the homework that I did before we did this, okay? He is a man of great character and has mentored many great students at North Lamar. Coach George, during his many years as football coach, baseball coach, softball coach, most of all, mentor, made North Lamar ISD a better place. He is loved and adored by all. A little history of North Lamar, after going through a lot of yearbooks, talking to people involved. In nineteen ninety, the North Lamar High School softball team was started under the direction of head coach Jimmy Striplin and assistant coach Leslie Watson, per the nineteen ninety yearbook, where they finished as by-district champs, according to the Wall of Fame, on the back of the home dugout softball field the first year. In nineteen ninety-one, under the direction of, again, Coach Jimmy Striplin and assistant coach Leslie Watson, the North Lamar Panthreds reached the area finals. In nineteen ninety-two, according to this yearbook, North Lamar, yearbook, Coach Alden George takes over as head coach of the program, with the help of first-year assistant coach Kathy Barker, and the team reached the area finals. Nineteen ninety-two to two thousand, according to all the yearbooks, head coach George and assistant coach Barker headed up the softball program as a duo for nine years. They made the playoffs in ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-nine, and two thousand. That's four of the nine years the Panthreds made the playoffs. According to yearbooks and staff, it was an exciting time for North Lamar softball. In two thousand and one to two thousand and eleven, coach Kathy Barker takes over as head coach, and first-year assistant Jimmy Finley takes over the program. In eleven years of Coach Barker as head coach, Coach Finley as an assistant coach, the Panthreds made the playoffs every year, oh-one, oh-two, oh-three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. And I must mention, in two thousand and ten, this coaching duo took the Panthreds to the one and only state championship in school history. Two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen, Jimmy Finley takes over as head coach of the softball program, and Kathy Barker moves to assistant coach. In the six years with Coach Finley as head coach and Coach Barker as assistant, they made the playoffs again every year, two thousand and twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, and in two thousand and sixteen, they were the four-eight state runner-up. Two thousand and eighteen, Coach Ashley Enzley takes over as head coach, again with Coach Kathy Barker as assistant coach. Nineteen ninety to ninety-one, again, Coach Jimmy Striplin was the head coach, with assistant coach Leslie Watson, they spent two years. As we go down through here, nineteen ninety-two to two thousand, Coach George was nine years as head coach, Kathy Barker spent eleven years as head coach, Jimmy Finley spent six years as head coach, Coach Barker's now been here twenty-nine years, all but two years of the softball program. I would also like to say, doing some research and talking to it, there's been a lot of talk about how the field was built, the way I understand it, and this is me, this is not on behalf of the Board. Mr. Richard Shirock and his wife Jane, a teacher at North Lamar, donated most, if not all, the fencing and dirt work, and were also actively involved in building the softball complex in conjunction with Coach George. The Board discussed and deliberated October seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, Mr. Stone was absent naming the softball field. The Board voted unanimously November the twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, to name the street between the baseball field and football field after Coach Alden George, according to official minutes from the meetings, and Mr. Holmes was absent due to illness. All of this, you can find online, it's on the minutes on the website, okay? With that said, I would like to reiterate that this Board has and did take action, and we are very proud of Coach George and his family and all that they have done for this district, and is the reason we unanimously came to the conclusion. I would also add that the nineteen months that I have personally been on the Board, no one has ever come before this Board and discussed it with a Board, no one. But this Board did our homework the best we could, and most importantly, we took action, and we've named the street after a great man and an awesome coach, Alden George. Finally, it really does disturb me that the media posted a story about this this weekend without ever reaching out to the Board President, any Board member for that matter, or the superintendent. No one ever reached out to get our side of the story. This type of action is exactly what is wrong with society today, as well as what's wrong with our district, in my opinion. As a Board, we discussed having a celebration after the signs were placed on the street for Coach George on the newly-named tennis courts requested and named after former tennis coach Lance Johnson, and the signs were also placed on the front of James Dawson's athletic facility, the James Dawson Athletic Facility. We haven't planned that yet, I'm assuming, because we only meet once a month, and the signs aren't up yet on the tennis court, so we haven't planned that yet. Therefore, these are my Ricky Richardson statements about what has been transferring on this matter. Because of this, on the advice of new superintendent Dr. Jason Adams, we have also put in place a new policy for naming facilities going forward to clear up this type of confusion in the future. This Board has acted. I would finally like to say congratulations to Coach Alden George and his family for this honor, and thank you respectfully, Coach, for all that you've done for the young people of North Lamar School District. Hope that clears the air. Hey, Red, I'm going to give you this. They're all marked in the book. Thank you, sir.
Okay, no one else signed up? That'll close public comments. I take it down to item number five, consent agenda.
There is one item in the consent agenda. Jeff Nutt from Guaranteed Bait came by this morning and handed me some stuff with financing agreement with Guaranteed to do ideal impact. Their attorney at the bank has requested just to change the language of the motion, the same process, just changing the language of the motion, so I have that new language. And what it says is, "Adopt a resolution authorizing the entry of a financing agreement with Guaranteed Bank and Trust to finance equipment and making certain findings related thereto."
Who requested that?
I'll get this to you.
Okay, good.
The Attorney.
Jeff did, or the attorney did?
The attorney for Guaranteed.
So, what were in those minutes? What minutes are those? Do you know what minutes are those?
Those are the December.
They're just December twelve?
December tenth.
And we'll change that language.
I've got a question. The same board meeting on consent agenda, item number five?
What we do is find out what needs to be pulled and pull it separately, vote on the consent agenda, and then address items individually that need to be pulled.
This is just to correct. It's just to correct.
You're still pulling it?
I'm just stating the fact that we need to correct it, that's all I'm asking.
It's the same minutes, though, so we've already pulled those ones. It's the same set.
So, anyway, it says six, it says, and I'm sure it's just a typo, motion carries six one with Ricky Richardson abstaining, there were only six people there that night, so it should be six oh.
It's the same ones.
Yeah. And it's just simple to fix.
Anything else? Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question, it's in the check register.
Hold on. What you got to do is either you got to pull it out from the consent agenda, you got to request to pull it out of the consent agenda, and then consider it separate. Now, then we vote on...
Page nineteen of which? Let me check register.
Yeah, you just pull that from the consent agenda, we'll go on with that.
Okay, that's been pulled, I have to request to Mr. Richardson.
Motion to the remaining consent agenda item.
Okay, Mr. Stone, I have a second. I had another one. Okay.
Just pull the whole register.
Pull the whole checklist?
Yeah, you pulled the whole register.
I have a second.
Second.
Second, but next question. Any further discussion? Any none of those in favor? Motion carries seven oh.
Now, you're taking the...
Now, you want to talk about this check register? Okay, sir. On twelve, four, looks like we spent forty-three hundred and thirty-three, forty-three fifty-three thirty-three for the attorney. What page? Page nineteen. And then, what? Question is, we went eight more days and spent twenty-six, sixteen, eighty-two.
And these would be fees or charges that were done before decent attention?
Would that have anything to do with the email I sent you on Friday asking you what the...
I mean, yes, some of it could be. I mean, like, some of those in that one ninety-nine could be, and for sure, those ones with four thirty-seven would be.
I just wanted to, I didn't hear anything else back from you, so I didn't think that's what it was or if it wasn't. And one last question. Page twenty-five. What is that for?
What are you talking about?
Which one?
Twelve, twelve, eighteen, nineteen hundred dollars worth of fence.
I would have to pull it to see. I don't know that for sure. Four sixty-one, that's going to come from a activity account that is possibly in softball, is what I'm thinking, because they proposed that fence down there on the...
Thought all that was supposed to be donated.
Not the fence.
They said that night, if you'll pull up the meeting, the exact words you were us, you'll pull up your minutes there, and you can pull up the video.
It's budgeted, you're not asking for a budget amendment, it's within our budget meeting.
Would it be art if I finished? Could it be art if I finished? It said, on the deal, it even says that everything would be donated, wouldn't cost anybody anything, we got three to four people doing all the donations, and I even went back and looked on the video on the one twenty-six mark on the YouTube, says the same thing, so I was just trying to figure out why we were buying something, because the thing that we approved was that it wasn't going to cost anybody anything.
May I check on it again? Four sixty-one is not budgeted money, that is activity fund money.
Sure, I'm just asking, maybe something to it. Sure.
Anything else, Mr. Richardson?
That's it.
Anyone else have anything? Motion to approve, secretary?
I'll make it.
Motion by Mr. Stone, he has a second.
Somebody gonna let us know about this for sure. What other question? Hold on, I'll tell you this.
Page twenty-five.
Okay, go.
I have a second, by Mr. Martin. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Seven oh. Thank you. Takes down to item number six.
Can I ask a question? Do you think we should skip on down to number eight and get that taken care of, on the action items? Just, well, from what I understand, we don't have one, so with everything we got going on tonight, we probably ought to get that cleared up.
You don't have one, what?
Attorney, you talking about, item six H?
Yes.
H.
Six, he said eight, okay.
H, six H, I thought he said eight too, six H. Is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
We'll go to item six H, consideration of approval agreement with Powell and Leon, the school attorney, Dr. Adams.
I sent you guys the agreement with Blake and his firm, as we discussed in December. This is a firm that you guys wanted to go with, so it just needs your approval.
I know it was loud in that meeting that night, but for me, it was still about, we never have taken action for him not to be our attorney. So do we really gotta, I mean, how we gotta do sign a contract, is that right? Is that right?
I have a motion, what was the recommendation of the superintendent?
This? I'll make a motion. Please pound Leon for our school attorney from this point forward.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
There's not another attorney that, other than Powell Leon, we could look besides Cresser, I mean, the work that was done for us through, in the past, from Powell Leon was not impressive, in my opinion. And they never gave us clear guidance, it was always, you know, they never said, hey, you need to do this, you need to do that. Cresser, I thought, did a really good job of telling us, this is what I would do in this situation, that never happened with Powell Leon. We went through a lot of heartache and we just never got clear guidance. And I just wanna know if there's another firm, other than Powell Leon, that we could come to a compromise on.
I understand, and I respectfully disagree, and that's okay, and that's what we're here, that's what we're both elected for. But I was never comfortable with Mr. Crass, from the first time I met him, to be honest with you, and I didn't feel like that he gave us much direction either, and I was never disappointed in Powell Leon myself at all. But I will say this, the only thing that we have on the agenda for tonight is to approve him.
I agree with that. So I'd make a recommendation, my recommendation would be to table and look for, just give us several other options.
Is that your motion?
No, I'd be my.
Recommendation.
My recommendation. I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we accept.
Well, you already made a motion.
Already made your motion, we're discussing.
We'll just discuss it right now. Mr. Blake Plow, would you like to say anything in your defense for your company?
I don't know that, I'm prepared to.
You might not want to, I'm just giving you the opportunity.
Our firm would feel privileged to serve the school district. I'm not aware of any instance where we haven't met your expectations in the past, if we.
I've got several, I can definitely aim for you.
Maybe y'all can visit there.
You want to, that's fine.
I believe in constructive criticism, and if we can improve our performance, that is certainly our goal. We want you to have the highest possible level of legal services possible. Our firm has been growing, we now have eighteen attorneys in five cities around the state. We serve well over two hundred school districts around the state of Texas, including most of the school districts in region eight. And we try to serve school districts in a holistic fashion. We do just about everything for public school districts, except collect delinquent taxes. And I wanna compliment you for these young people that you brought into your board meeting tonight, because I think that really drives home what we're all here for, which is the best interest of the children of the school district. And if you would find it appropriate, in the district's interest, to retain our firm, we're here to serve this impressive team fight. Happy to respond to any questions, happy to visit with you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Any none of those in favor of employing Al and Leon as the school attorney? All those poos? Motion passed four zero.
Four three.
Four three, excuse me. And with the three against, Mr. Colston, Mr. Martin, and Mr. Stone. All right, I'm gonna go back to six eight. Which is? T A.
T A P R report.
So, we received our T A P R report, right about the time we got out for Christmas break, so Dr. Chadwick has prepared some information and some stuff for you. You wanna chair, Dr. Chad?
Don't wanna chair, no. No, I just wanted to be able to hold this, I wanna walk through this with you real quick. What we're going to do is, we're gonna have our annual report next month, we'll have, you know, a lot of information, and so to be more detailed with the taper, we're gonna go ahead and present it in detail today, and then a few comparison reports that I know that y'all enjoy receiving. So, starting out, taper is nothing new, this is only information from seventeen eighteen, and it's just kinda all wrapped up nice and neat. They, the new thing is, though, there's two formats, there's an online and there's a PDF version. The PDF is what you've got, the online, they've started doing online this year so that they can add or as needed, without having to starlight. So, it's always gonna stay updated. I'm gonna start you off with the cover page, now you have this report, correct? I'm just, I don't know exactly what page it is.
Yes.
Alright, so the cover page shows the statuses and ratings, and like I said, there's not much that's new. But one thing that is new is our twenty-eighteen special education determination status, which was meets requirements. And that is the highest of the four possible ratings you can receive. This is just the cover page.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, I haven't.
I got one page off, I'm sorry.
And then the twenty-seventeen armed services vocational opportunity battery is, it is new, that was new this year, Senate Bill eighteen forty-three. We've met, we got many requirements, that is the highest of four possible ratings again. So both of those, now what that rating was, was that we have to schedule ASVAB during normal school hours without conflicts of other activities. And we are taking care of that as determined by the state. And now, we'll move on forward, I just wanted to share with you the information that's on that cover page. Page three of the report, do y'all have the page numbers at the bottom?
Forty-one.
If I can reference a page number, if it's gonna be, or do I need to reference the top?
I got forty-one as a page.
You've got forty-one as a page.
That's the first page after the cover page.
You're looking at the board book, and then three is the actual page of the taper, so forty-one or three, and that's gonna be.
Is that the one, same page, Ron?
Page forty-one in it.
Okay, page forty-one. Now, this is the summary of the star performance. What's new this year from last year is that they're putting approaches, meets, and masters in, because of the way that's calculated. Two years are given for comparison, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, and twenty-seventeen, but twenty-seventeen is not gonna be like it was last year. What they did is they recalculated all twenty-seventeen, so that you could get it comparison. Since it scored differently, they wanted to make sure that you could tell the difference in seventeen and eighteen, but you can't look at last year's taper and do that. Yeah, they had to recalculate all of twenty-seventeen to make it match up to the approaches, meets, and masters.
So the two seventeen year last year, just shredded material? And you use it for this, right?
If you wanna compare it to anything from here up, like seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, the way it's gonna look, you'll wanna look at this one right here, where twenty-seventeen has been recalculated. So what you're gonna see is all three performance rates for all assessments, pages three to the top of page six, so thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and forty-four, so the top of page forty-four. And that gives you all of the different scores, seventeen and eighteen. What I would like to look at is page six, where I believe it's forty-four for you, is where they take and do all grades, all subjects. This is what T E A used for calculations on our academic ratings. That front page of the academic ratings, it's at the top, it says all grades, all subjects on the left-hand column.
I'll find it, go ahead.
Okay. So I just wanted y'all to know, this page right here takes an average of the district. So as a district board, I thought that's kind of a very important page for you to see. And later in the presentation, I have some tables for you, some charts, where you can see this and nicely look at the comparisons. Right here, what you've got in front of you is just that. So if you look at all grades, all subjects, and you look at approaches, meets, and masters at eighty-one, forty-nine, and twenty, that's where they added those three up, got one hundred and fifty, divided by three, and got fifty for our accountability. And then they put that into the formula for the, how it looks like from one, zero to a hundred versus whatever their scale score is. So it wasn't actually fifty, but fifty was what it was, if you remember, that was the very first number on the accountability. Anyway, I just wanna show you, this is where that came from, or that was put in here. And you see all grades, and again, I've got the comparison of these, of the area schools, and we'll look at that here in just a minute.
Is that not what was on the, whenever we did our accountability rating, that showed all the schools? The same data?
That showed all the schools?
It's on there, the same thing's on there. Same ones are on there, three counts, I think we have done three counts. In a nice bar graph.
Now, what's new is the next page, the school progress domain, that academic growth domain, domain three, and now that's in the taper. And you can look at this and see that it's only twenty-eighteen, it's only twenty-eighteen because, for the same reason, that they had to redo the twenty-seventeen score, because of significant changes in calculations from last year. So, this is district progress at the top, it's school progress domain, academic growth score by grade and subject. If you look at this, nine of fifteen of these scores are greater than or equal to the region eight average. I think that's speaking volumes, nine of fifteen are greater than or equal to our regional average. The next page is district prior year and student success initiative. This is another page that I feel like warrants some applause for the work that the teachers are doing in the classroom, our RTI teachers, our intervention and our classroom teachers. This shows that a lot of hard work is being done. If you look at the first one, the sum of grades, fourth rate, this is progress of prior year non-proficient students. So what it's asking is, how are we doing with students who failed the year before? And if you'll notice, that our, these numbers right here, it includes seventeen and eighteen and both reading and math, are much higher than region and state averages.
Chuck, on the reading there, can you explain that on seventeen eighteen district? Looks like we went down.
We did, and for me to explain it, I'd have to pull all those scores out, I don't mind, I can get back with you and see if I can analyze some of that, but it, what I'm, what I do want to point out is it's still higher than both region and state. And I'm really, really proud of that. But I've got a little question marked by that, and I'll go back and look.
Thank you.
Alright, and then student succession, success initiative, again, the rest of this is still highlighting student performance of students who failed the year before. I think the thing to point out is, this is the group of students who get two times to take the test. Grade five reading, you'll see first star administration at seventy-eight, then if you drop two down where it says star cumulative, this is after the second administration, you can see how many more students pass. We were at plus eight percent, which is higher than region and state increase. So, I thought our test increase was good, again, that shows very hard work on the teachers' part, and the intervention teachers taking a kid who failed, and then really working and making sure that they target the performance where they didn't do so well. Same thing, you see that same increase in math, reading, math five, reading eight, and grade eight math, which, for me, it's on the next page. It went from eighty-eight to ninety-five after the second test. So, again, a lot of hard work for educators in the district. That was a very short page. The next page is bilingual only, and it's got fourteen columns, our data is very minimal, because we don't have a very large population, I just wanted to point out. If you look at the last one, two, three, four, five, six columns, it just kinda defines the different types of ESL programs that you can have. And where there's data, you can tell those are the types of programs that we do have.
What we do have, we do pretty well with, am I correct?
I'm sorry, I'm.
So what we do have, we do pretty well with.
Yes, sir, our scores are, they're not something that we're really, really concerned about, because I think that our teachers do an excellent job taking care of students who are struggling with their language skills in all subjects. The next page is a continuation, in fact, if we go to the next page, it's star participation, and our scores are right on target with region and state at ninety-four percent. Students that are included in, that are not, that are included in accountability. One hundred percent participation, but then the accountability is based on the snapshot. The next page, we start talking about attendance graduation and dropout rates. And I just want to remind you that there's a lag for one year in attendance graduation and dropout rates, so this is sixteen seventeen and fifteen sixteen school year data, so not our last year's graduates. If you notice, attendance rates were above state average in fifteen sixteen, sixteen and seventeen, and state and region average. You know, you're looking at numbers that are at ninety-seven point three for four-year longitudinal rate, I think all of those just speak volumes. We're talking, I think, historically here, strong graduation rate. The next page, district attendance, I'm sorry.
When you say historically, you're saying we're historical numbers for our district, in your opinion?
We're right here.
Right.
That I'm looking at.
I got you, okay.
Because I, I'm just comparing that to region and state, and we're above.
Just trying to follow you.
I'm sorry.
No, you're doing good, I just wanna make sure you understand.
What I was really looking at is the dropout rate that we, you know, how low it is compared to, you know, the state. And whatever we're doing to intervene is, you know, keeping, keeping us in the positive there.
I think so, too.
Two percent? Three percent?
Basically, the next page is more of the same. Class of, we're down to class of twenty-fourteen, four-year graduation rates, still higher than state and region. The next page, the profile, the graduation profile, it's just showing you that graduation types, graduation by ethnicity, and then special education graduates, eco-diss, and at-risk graduation.
So we got zero percent completion of nine or more hours of dual credit in any subject?
I'm sorry, did you already turn the page? Are you looking at college?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and so, I do have, you know, we will speak to that, because there's another page further back that'll show you that's not even true. You know? So, in our college career military readiness, there are two categories that basically breaks it down into college ready and then career military ready. In college ready graduates, it does show that we're at twenty-six point five percent in college ready overall, but that's, it's very misleading, because that does include some coding errors. So our twenty-six point five percent, if you look down where it says completed neither nine or more hours of dual credit and it says zero, that's keeping that percent from being. and it says zero, that's keeping that percent from being as high as it should be. That was a coding error, and, um, well, I'm going to show you here in a little bit. It's going to show you how we did complete some dual credit classes. So not-
But that's what affected our-
We can't fix this, but we can, we can, we've, we've already fixed moving twelve.
Right, that's what affected our accountability rating.
It did.
Right, okay.
It did.
That was a coding problem Dr. Adams talked to us about.
Mm-hmm, definitely. Um, but I will say, to highlight the high points here, the, um, our TSI criteria graduates for annual graduates, if you look at that, we are scoring higher than all in English, language, math, and then both subjects we're schooled. We've got a higher percent than all region eight.
Significantly did.
Yeah. So looking at that, and, and not taking that whole average as college ready, but leaving the coding error out, you can see that we're above region average in all of those. Yeah, I think it was. So, um, and then AP, look at AP. Math criteria in any single subject at seven point two percent, we're also higher than the region. And it's, there's, there's just a huge difference in the region and the state. So I, I feel like us focusing on our region, because that's, you know, we're Upper Northeast Texas, and that's, it's the culture of this area, which versus if we were living in a metroplex, it might look completely different. But what we're doing is taking care of our kids that are here, and what we feel like, and they, and their parents want us to do. So we're making sure we're managing what our students need. College career military graduates, career military, the annual graduates. This one, again, includes some coding errors because of the military. We know we had kids who enlisted, and there was just a little piece of coding that was, but this has already been fixed. This will be made sure, and I think we're going to be really good when we look at this again. If you look at that last one where it says US armed force enlistment, we know we had some. And again, that's something that we're, we've just taken care of. I don't think it should be a black eye hit, because we know better. It's just a, it's just not pretty on paper, but that's, we know what we know. The next page, TSI, that's Texas Success Initiative. If you look again, higher than the region eight in four out of five. If you're looking at fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, reading, math, and then both subjects. That's, it's nothing but good news. CTE coherent sequence, annual graduates, we're higher in the state and region in all four categories. There's fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, and seventeen. The college prep course where it says zero, you can see it's very low across the board. We did not offer that course. That's a course that you must run in conjunction with your local junior college. And right now, you know, we've talked about it, but you can see where across the board, a lot of people aren't offering that course. Um, AP participation results, again, um, four out of five. In twenty-seventeen, four out of five was higher than the region eight percentage. In AP results, greater than or equal to the examination criterion, we are ten out of sixteen, higher than the state and the region, in all of those results. If you look at sixteen and seventeen combined. I will say, it looks really, really good predominantly in the English and the science departments. The next page, another glowing mark, if you look at the average SAT scores. Um, I don't mean to pass the SAT ACT results, but I just can't help but look at the average SAT scores and note that that's one hundred percent higher than region and state. So twelve out of twelve of those measures are higher than the region and the state in the SAT scores. ACT scores, we did, did well, but I think that our focus is a little more SAT, and I can tell you that that's-
SAT?
SAT, over ACT.
In the middle one, average SAT scores, every one of those, we scored higher than state and region for the last two years that were reported. Other post-secondary indicators on the next page. So you can see where it says advanced dual credit course completion. All of a sudden, we have numbers, and they're not zeros. So this is the one I was telling you about. This kind of shows that we were doing a great job with getting our dual credit going. It's just, it has, there's a certain button there that was the only button that we're going to pull from, and we've got it fixed. Graduates enrolled in Texas Institution of Higher Education. At, at the printing of this one, it was fifty-four point eight percent. And on January eleventh, they updated that, and we are at fifty-five point nine percent now. Um, again, higher than state and region, with those of our graduates that enrolled in Texas Institution of Higher Education. Also graduate higher than those students that had, that were able to complete the first year without taking a development course. That's huge. So great things happening. The rest of this is district student information, um, giving data there. Um, don't know if you have any questions on that. It's not, not much of a difference other than what we already know, that our district staff information wraps up the rest of the report. So that's actually all I have, unless you have questions specific to that, other than the comparisons that I was about to show you. So you ready to move to comparisons? Okay.
I, I want to mention one thing that I don't know if this is just a last year thing or not, but our turnover rate for teachers was twenty-three point eight percent. And it's hard to believe that here at North Lamar, we have getting close to a twenty-five percent turnover rate. That's on page sixty-one, under staff. We went from, well, I don't know what we went from, I don't know what it was in the past, but that one number is glaring to me.
Well, I'll look that up.
No, I mean, it's, 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 I guess it's a fact.
Oh, yeah, it is. I was just going to say, I could look at, you know, the year before.
Well, maybe three or four years before.
Okay, let's see. The next one, you have Lamar County Schools Longitudinal Comparison, star performance data. This has all of grades three through all of the EOC testing, and shows highlighted the, um, higher score across the board. And I can tell you that, uh, as North Lamar went up one from last year. Not exactly sure, other than what you see right there in front of you.
Eight out of twenty-two, we're the high. Right? Eight out of twenty-two, we're the high.
Other than Chisholm.
Yeah, eight of the twenty-two columns, we are the high score.
Uh-huh, yes, sir, that's exactly.
Chisholm was ten out of twenty-two.
Chisholm was ten, current seven.
It's my bad.
Now, I think that, I can't see what that's bad at all, I see that there's a- a bad look here, especially when you're looking at, historically, we were at five, six, four, and seven.
Yes.
And now we're at eight.
Yes.
So wrong direction.
Teachers are working hard.
Teachers are working very hard.
I would just like to comment on writing scores. Uh, that seems to be, uh, as I've looked through all of these, uh, the writing seems to be a, uh, you know, a concern.
It is.
And, uh, you know, all the way from elementary on up. And, uh, I'm just going to say that this is, uh, an area that we need to, you know, really focus on and try to help. And, uh, I'm under, the understanding that in, in some of our writing classes, or some of our bigger numbers of classes, I'm talking student-wise, and, you know, I just have to ask the question, how do we expect our numbers, our teachers, our students to improve when there may, it, it appears that there's an overload in many of the, the classes. You know, for sure here at the high school on freshman level, we have writing classes with, you know, a high twenty, thirty kids in them. And if you're going to, you know, if you're going to improve on writing, then shouldn't we write more? And it's hard for a teacher to, you know, I mean, she, she's got a hundred and fifty papers to grade with every class. But she has, I mean, I mean, that's just, it's just something that we need to, I think, help, help with.
Can I ask a question on that? Yeah, you've been earlier, you've been earlier. When we talked about this as the first of the year, and tell me if I misunderstood, because I could have, but we talked about writing was strong, and we were working on a new curriculum or something to help that with?
Uh, we're adopting a new curriculum this year.
Okay.
We are in an adoption year for new curriculum.
Next year.
Coming in next year. And that's up through eighth grade.
Right.
And then ninth through twelfth is going to be the next year.
Right. That's how, it hadn't kind of always been that way?
Mm-hmm, yes, usually.
Right. Um, one of my questions for that, is it looks like we're really struggling is in the, say, three to eighth grade, three to seventh grade, three to sixth grade, somewhere in there. Fourth grade writing's really, is there any correlation to that? That we seem to struggle right around fourth grade writing?
Correlation to what?
What's the problem?
To what the problem is?
Yeah.
Well, here's, here are my little notes.
Okay.
That I was fixing to go to on writing specifically. So do y'all have the, those comparisons? And if you've got it printed here, I could copy this. That's in color, so you can see it. And here's another one in color. Will that help anybody? I brought a couple of extra copies in color. Here's a color one, somebody needs it. Okay, so, well, let's just kind of walk through this, and when we get to the writing, I'll review that just a little bit. But on this one, and again, this was from page six, and when we went to, on the taper in page six, I was telling you, this was the district average scores. And so I went ahead and did this with comparisons, so that you could see how that, um, works with the state, the region, North Lamar Parish, Prairieland, and Chisholm. Um, that way you can maybe get a, a better feel for what it looks like. The first one is all grades, all subjects, everything. So if you take the district as a whole, every academic that's tested, and look where we stand. We are in the middle, I, I start with state, then region, North Lamar Parish, Prairieland, and Chisholm. And you can see what that looks like. Now, at the top, the way I've color coded it, it's green if it was the top score. It's yellow if it was the next highest. And, you know-
We're just dropping those two right there.
You can notice that we're, we're right there, where we're at the top. So this is every grade, every subject. The next page.
And I want to, I'll get back to this, but I want to point out to that, and I don't know, I don't know how much work it would take you to do. I certainly don't want to ask you to do too much, just to get one board member data. But the all grades skews those numbers just a little bit, because I noticed some trends in the, um, elementary lower level that don't show up in the all grades that I'll get to in a question after you finish. But I would like, I would like to see it separated out.
What this looks like, separated out?
To see if the trends that I noticed are actually there.
Okay. I can bring that, I can certainly do that. It's not hard.
It's no rush, and I certainly don't want to make you do-
This is, this is very good.
I don't know, thank you.
Makes it easy to look at.
I thought it was easy for me to see, you know, I want to see it too, and, and kind of just get a quick glance. If you look at ELAR, again, we're falling right in, you know, we're at, in the second spot. But even at the, even for its masters, we're at eighteen, where, you know, we were right next to the nineteen, which was state. Um, and you can see on the scores, on the chart, where we fall.
Better than the region.
Uh-huh. Every one of them.
But to me, it, I mean, you can compare districts, re, whatever, it's also close. I mean, it's, it's, it's close.
They're very close. I mean, I, I think it just kind of highlights the fact that they're, we're, we're doing what's really good for our kids. I see in math, look at math. I mean, again, the ones where we're not highlighted, we're one point off. So I like the way that looks. Now, this next one is the one that, uh, Sheila, you brought up. And this is the one that, you know, it kind of hurts to look at it, and know that this is something that we're really going to have to work on. So what we've decided is that we were going to plan a vertical teacher team. Someone that's representative of K through twelve, not someone, but someone, someone from each one, review the idea, the concept of the writing portfolio, and determine the best way to move forward. We can do those digitally now, and see, um, what writing teachers think. You know, I'm not a writing teacher, I'm not a writing specialist, but I know, I know some people who are, and they work right here. And I feel like if I can put them in the same room, that we can talk this out and make sure we're doing what's best across the board, K through twelve. Our ELAR coaches plan on breaking down the teaks, and the results as they went up for the last few years, and determining where there's breakdown, what grade, where it's, where the biggest focus is. Bringing that information and working with this teacher team. So, you know, we don't want to pull teachers and, and bother them too much as we're going into this testing season, but this has to be addressed, and, and we'll ask for some volunteers that want to work on a plan, so.
The number one thing that I would like to see looked at is class size.
And I do, you know, that's where, that's where I feel like the teacher voice will come out, um, when we're sitting and visiting and talking about what's best, and how we can do this better. I want to hear what they have to say.
And I want to ask Mr. Scarborough this also, but tell me, a fresh, a freshman student, tell me about some of their subjects. Obviously, a pre-AP kid, say, has English class, do, do they also have a writing class, or is writing-
It's all in there.
Okay, so one would assume that a pre-AP student would start writing before the second semester, as, in their freshman year. Um, and, you know, that's some stuff that we need to, to look at, at what's actually happening in the classroom. Uh, me having a kid that, that is in one of those classrooms. Um, second of all, um, when you get in college, my experience, and I know it's been a few years since I've been, I've recently paid for a master's education with my wife in accounting, and almost every subject, they write. You know, so if we're sending these kids off to college, and they have trouble with writing, we're setting them up for failure right away. But obviously, you can't expect a freshman AP student to write if we're failing them in first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade. Um, and I know you guys are focusing on that, and I appreciate that it is a focus. But that, that's alarming to me, and, and, you know, I wonder what Sheila's saying, if some of these, you know, if I'm a teacher, and I'm not, and I've never been, don't pretend to be, but if, if I was, I obviously wouldn't want, if I had too many students, I don't want to grade too many writing papers, because it obviously takes a lot longer than running a Scantron or, or a multiple choice test, um, having to read every single, um, assignment. Um, and if, that could be factored in, if they are overloaded, if, well, we're not assigning more writing. But I'm, I'm personally alarmed, and I know that's, uh, me as a parent, something that I didn't talk to Mr. Scarborough about, and we have spoke a little bit about it, but that a freshman, pre-AP kid's not been writing all semester. Um, and, you know, I also know that kids don't always tell you the truth about everything. So I'm not pretending to be naive, but, um, you know, it's- to me, if you want to get better at writing, you have to write.
Yes.
And it's not that teachers don't want them to write, it's an impossible task. I mean, a hundred, it's impossible to, to grade those papers the way you need to grade those papers, to correct those papers the way you need to, to have them redo those paper, because papers are going to have, probably get rewritten, you're going to have to grade them again, and again, and again. And then maybe they'll, you know, improve, just, just to get the improvement. You know, I mean, he's right, when you go to college freshman English, you better know what a theme sentence is, and a theme paragraph is, and how to fill in the content, and how to close it.
Or you go to writing lab.
And it's an agreed that we really have to work on the lower grades, so that we're getting, you know, them adequately prepared for the ninth grade rigor of a pre-AP class.
I will give you a sure, it's a focused area that you guys are tackling, right?
Yes, sir. I mean, you know, little, little things like these just jump right out at you when you see it in a bar that just doesn't quite meet your standards.
But you also have to remember, we didn't just get these scores in December. I mean, we didn't just get these figures in December. I mean, we've had these figures since, it's last year or something. This is something we're just starting to jump on right now.
Well, and it should be previous years too, because we've been hearing about it since I was, four years now on the board. It's been reported this way, so we should be getting to the point that we're starting to see some progress.
I think we are.
Maybe the-
I would say we're doing everything but writing. I don't know that we're seeing this.
I see lots of progress in everything but writing.
Everything else but writing, yeah.
And so that's, that's definitely going to have to just be a laser- And so, that's, that's definitely going to have to just be a laser focus target.
I agree with Jeff, it looks like back in the, the problem is this back at the elementary where the real problem is.
Guys, I mean, if, you know, a key to this is writing is only tested in fourth and seventh grade, not tested in any other grade. So, you take a third grade teacher, when they're tested on math and reading, what are they focused on?
Oh, sure.
They're focused on those two areas. And then, you know, in our, in our group. And they're working on some writing, so I mean, there's some discrepancies there from what the state expects. And then, you know, the pressure that, that is also put on teachers to pass their, their tests as a third grade teacher, or a fifth grade teacher, or a sixth grade teacher. Concentrate on those tests that they had to have for their kids, I mean, there's, there, there's other factors in play, other than just.
Time consumption.
Correct.
And I didn't mean to cut you off, were you, were you done with that portion? I'd like to talk about the AP placement second.
Almost, I've got two more pages. In contrast.
I had some other things before you move on to the AP placement.
Okay. In contrast to the writing, look at science.
I was so excited about that.
Wouldn't, why would you be so excited?
That was just wonderful.
That's just wonderful. Science is just off the charts. And, uh, social studies, the next page, not far behind.
Yep.
So, great things.
Same old teachers.
Great things.
So wait a minute, I gotta, can I go back to that? That just makes it real clear, yeah, that goes along with what Dr. Adams is saying. I mean, we're doing so good in everything else.
That's right.
Right?
I said the same thing to myself, I think that's true of myself.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't want to, I'm not knocking what Jeff says, because I happen to agree with that too. As one that graduated from here, and one that's a sophomore, and same thing as a sophomore AP, I can tell, doesn't change a whole lot. Um, I get that we're doing better in everything else. And I'm not wanting to imply that I think we're neglecting writing, that's not it. But we're, we are doing better, but we can't let that slip through the cracks also. Right, and I'm not saying it is intentional, so I'm not laying blame when I say that, does that make sense? I think that's what he's saying to him, I don't mean to speak for you. Is that right? So we have a plan.
Very focused. And I will continue to share with you.
Sure, I know you're.
As we go.
I mean, to the, to the business owner that doesn't do this every day, to me, it seems like you would focus on pre-fourth grade, if it's tested first and fourth grade. That those kids, that's where you start from scratch, that you're doing something different, and grades, you know, K one, two, three, and.
And we have had Dr. Kelly Fortenberry here three times already this year. And that's her, your area of emphasis, is the writing and reading performance of the early elementary. And we've had those meetings, some professional development this year, um, because we've sat and talked about this, this is glaring. I'm going to have to fix it.
Well, see if they remember a program called Reading Across the Curriculum. Uh, anybody remember that?
I do.
We, we made everybody write, even the PE teachers had to write. And, and I mean, at some point, everybody had to turn in some kind of writing, I don't know how often, uh, six weeks, or whatever, but.
Was it cursive writing?
Huh?
Was it cursive writing too?
Well, probably was, depending on what grade you're in, but everybody, I mean, it was writing across the curriculum, we had to write. Everybody had to write, because they were having the same issue for every, every network. So, I know it was called Writing Across the Curriculum, because we laughed about PE teachers having to make their kids write. Sit in the corner, play jacks, and write their paper, is what they used to have to do.
I remember it too.
One more?
Oh, as far as that goes, I'm, I'm for the AP, and I wanted to make sure that you were.
So, the, I had requested the advanced placement, placement data to be brought, and I'd like to handle that separately from the taper report, if that's okay.
Okay.
So.
I mean, I'm through with the taper report.
I'm sure other people may have questions about the taper report, but, I, I mean, I, I studied it for hours this week, trying to understand, and I want to tell you, and I feel sorry for you guys, and the teachers, and the, um, um, the instructional coaches, and everyone trying to figure out what this data says, because what the business owner looks for is, what are the trends? And then, obviously, I caught it right as I was going to the truck to get my notes, um, that I left out there. And, um, I heard you say that with two thousand and seventeen, they had to adjust the numbers, so it worked out in this format. Do you feel like that adjustment, that that is a good comparison to eighteen?
To be able to compare seventeen to eighteen, yes, it's the only way to do that.
Okay. Um, well, as I looked, like I said, looking for the trends, uh, the first thing I wanted to see is how are we moving at state, state average, and, um.
And are you doing, which one are you talking about?
Seventeen versus eighteen. First six pages, one.
All tests, all subjects on the taper?
Of the sixty, of the sixty-six, first sixty-six lines or categories, page one through six.
Okay.
Um, through end of test, or end of course, um, is where I stopped. And.
Starting on page three of the taper report, which was zero forty-one.
Right, three through page six.
Okay.
At the top of page six, it goes through in, the last end of course. There's sixty-six different lines, if you add up, um, approaches, meets, and masters in those categories, and that's kind of what I worked with. So, twenty-eight of the sixty-six, um, were below state average, which is about forty-two percent. Seventeen of sixty-six, about twenty-six percent below region eight average, okay? You can have a glass, um, half full, half empty, if you look at half full, it's obviously, the number looks better than the other way. But I looked at the trends, thirty out of sixty-six trended down, and thirty-four of sixty-six trended up, with two staying the same. Once again, the data's, and I know we're dealing with two different sets of students, and that makes it difficult, so then you start trying to follow the students. And that's what really makes me feel sorry for you and the job you have to do, because, for example, if you look at gra, grades three and four, I mean, it's pretty easy to follow between there, but then when you drop, then you jump up to, um, like, grade six, and the same subjects go from what's normally like a sixty percent, pass ratio up to ninety percent, so, it makes, it makes it hard to follow that same group, when from one grade to the next, you went from sixty to ninety, and the state average did too. So obviously, the test is not the same.
Yeah.
And, um, so I don't know how you do it, and I applaud, applaud you for trying to extract the data and, and figure out what we need to do, and what we need to do to help these teachers. But, um, the trend that I did find, and that's why I would like to see, um, these, um, especially against the, the local schools, um, broken out into not just all subjects, because if you go into all subjects, what's happening at Stone at the high school is skewing some of the stuff that I found at the lower grade levels. And, and where, where I'm seeing it is like in grades three and four, and you guys can look at that. If you look at, um, like, the meets and masters categories, it's those two areas in the lower grade levels, it's where we have trouble.
Agreed.
So what I see is, we're not serving those students well enough that are in those categories now. In the past, we haven't had to worry about that, but with ABC rating, now we have to.
Agreed. And the shuttle scores are lower, because masters is lower for us in the early grades. And that's, uh, typically an indication of lower rigor in the classroom.
Can I ask a question while you're up there? Not to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, because there's one, we just got to talking about the writing. Right? We have one right here, that we went from nine percent master degree level to three percent master degree level. That would be hugely alarming to me.
It is.
Right? Okay. Well, when I.
You're not wrong on that.
No, and we're not trying to beat anybody up here. And then when we go, oh, you can just keep doing that. I mean, when we get, especially, there's some of that stuff that we're really low, master degree level.
So, I, I like the idea of breaking this down and doing the comparison of each one, and I'll have that.
We, you know, we're looking at comparisons versus Lamar County schools, you know, let's just, just, just throw it out there, and I mean, one that you look at that's really not scoring, um, in the top two in our area, I feel like if you looked at their data in the lower grade levels in meets and masters, you're going to see a little bit different thing. And the reason why is because they're basically, without having a better word, they're segregating those kids out and instructing them in a different classroom, and you would be familiar with that.
Very familiar.
But, I feel like that it's something we really need to look at, is how we're doing that, because I think that we're losing a lot of our kids that are in that category, because they feel like they're going over there, and they're getting a, a better set of curriculum, and better set, set of circumstances in the lower grade levels. And if that's the case, we need to look at the way we're doing things.
And we will.
And I will tell you, as you know, because you've seen those, some of the other data before, you've seen it a lot sooner than I have, they do do their upper echelon kids, the way they're broken out in classes all together, different than we do here. Correct?
Yes.
And I'm kind of along with Jeff, and that was the question that I was going to ask, is that what makes a difference for their, and to be honest with you, I'm not questioning you, I know you're, you do an awesome job, okay? But with that said, does that, does that help the upper echelon kids? I know two of my kids went through it, and they went with the same group of kids all the time, so they do it at a faster pace? Do you follow what I'm saying?
Philosophically, I feel like what's going on in the classroom has to be addressed, as far as differentiated instruction, and being able to make sure the rigor is high for the students who need it high, and to, to teach to the top.
Right.
And, and I think the rest will follow, I think that's been one of the things that's been, um, discussed through, through a lot of this, since we've changed the test. It's more about, it's less about passing, and it's more about moving up.
And you think that, you think without having those kids in a different environment, that one teacher can touch that, one that you're trying to get to just, um, approach? And a kid that's trying to master.
In the same, in the same classroom?
Because that's not.
Not without some good training and, and understanding, I, I.
And that's not what they were doing where you came from, and that's what.
No, it's not.
No.
I agree, that's not.
But you have to understand that the state doesn't, I mean, am I correct still? The state won't allow you to go bluebirds, yellowbirds, redbirds anymore.
Well, they are over there.
Well, I mean, I'm telling you, because we had it, and it was perfect, and I was astounded when suddenly we're in two groups where we had four. We had honors, advanced, regular, and basic.
Are you talking about the high school level?
Yes.
We're even talking about the elementary school.
Well, even then, even there, even there.
They split them out, and then what is, what is the word?
You know, I mean, there's always been bluebirds, redbirds, and yellowbirds, and greenbirds, and we can't do that anymore. Is that not right?
We don't need to be separating everybody, yeah.
Well, I mean, and that, I mean, and that, that might help you understand why it doesn't get done.
From a, now, I'm not talking about, from a socioeconomic or racial status whatsoever, I'm talking about from your, I mean, why do you have an advanced science class in middle if you can't separate kids from the kids that are advanced?
AP, that's a good thing, they can get in that.
I mean, it's, it's a question, I'm, I honestly don't know the answer to, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck.
Your GT track for six, twelve secondary, your pre-AP AP is your GT track versus K five, which is your GT pullout program. So it turns to, when we start the sixth grade, that advanced is their track. That is their track.
So fifth grade down, you can't do it either?
Fifth grade, I mean, what we have is a pullout, and you can, they, they have a pullout program, GT program. It's how they handle like K five.
But just because you're in GT, I mean, you could be a genius in not being GT, I mean, there's.
No, I know, I know, trust me, I know, I've been done that before.
And we're taking maybe the five percent, and across town, they're taking twenty, so, I mean.
Got to remember, Jeff, they have a thousand more students too.
Well, but it's still percentage wise, but the, but my, my question is, having had two kids that's gone through our AP track in the lower grade levels, are we using that to stimulate them in a higher way, or are we actually giving them an increased curriculum? And I know the answer to that, but my question is, are we changing that in the future, and using that time with those kids to further challenge the, the curriculum that they're supposed to be working on, instead just of other ways? Because I know how it's been in the past, and, um, I don't think it's effective myself. I'm not, I don't have the training that you have, I don't pretend to, but, um, you know, um, if they're serving twenty percent of the, the kids that, that's your meets and masters kids, at that level, and we're only taking five percent, you know, it's, it's just something we need to look at, and the trend points towards, versus state average, I'm interested in see how it is.
I'm happy to look at that for you, and then share the, I mean, the, the GT program, and how things are going, and give you all, all the information I can, I can bring back, and I'll have that for next time. Thanks, good question, excellent question.
And that's all I had, if anybody else has anything, but.
On paper? Good job. Okay, this last one right here is the AP, just the AP comparison. I have an extra color if somebody needs it. And you can see, um, it's from year twenty thirteen through twenty eighteen, as you go across then down, and looking at twenty eighteen, how it bared, and I know we're kind of been here a long time, so we're ready to move on, but I just wanted to show, um, the English language and composition row, and you can see how high those numbers are. Uh, the mean score versus Texas score on the, on the test results, um, I was looking at how, one, two, three, four, five, I didn't write it down. Uh, five of nine were higher than our mean score, is close to or higher than the Texas score. Um, honestly, and we're laying it out here, I'd like to see more students taking the test. I think our test participation numbers are a little low, but again, our English language and composition across the board, uh, thirteen enrolled, twelve tested, ninety-two percent participation, eight scored a three or higher, sixty-seven percent for a mean score of three, compared to the Texas mean score of two point five one, and.
Dr. Turner, I mean, I've had two kids, and one of them went all AP, and, and honestly, I wouldn't recommend it. And Tyler passed every one of his, I mean, but, the expense, and then, some schools take a three, some schools take a four. You know, there's no guarantee that even if you make a three, that's going to carry on to whatever college you go to. So, as a, somebody who pays the bills for college, I, I, you know, Aaron took a deal of credit, and everyone of those transferred. And it saved me a ton of money, so why would you recommend more kids taking the test? Because it's like seventy-five dollars a test, if I remember right. Yeah, and what benefit it, other than, you know, it helps us look good in the meeting here this morning, tonight?
Well, there are some rigorous AP standards that, um.
Either we got to get better to our AP program, is what I'm saying, or I'd be for just getting rid of it.
I think you answered what I was going to ask, how could we improve it? You being a parent, Tim, I think you answered it pretty well.
And just to expand on what Tim's saying, I can answer the reason why kids are taking it. Now, we recently, um, when Clint was still the high school principal, we looked at how we're weighting classes and how GPAs were figured in. And right now, the AP classes carry the highest weight, so you, your kids want to take that, and, and maybe your kids are not, um, competing for Val or Sal, but still, the University of Texas only takes what?
Five percent, yeah.
I mean, so a kid's got to make that five percent, and so if a kid that's really interested in doing that, obviously is worried about their GPA, and wanting to take classes that are highest weighted, so that's why they're always, it's the way that we're weighting classes, they're going to always want to take those classes. The reason why I asked to have this brought before the board, just so we can look at, talk about it, is I read the article, and I'm sure the rest of you saw on social media, about Dennison and the program that they put in place, and I would really encourage Dr. Adams and you guys to contact those guys over there, and see what they've done across the board with their program. You know, and they've won a recent award, I don't know if you guys saw it.
Oh, yeah, I saw it.
But, um, you know, one thing that they're doing is, um, they're paying for the exams.
Right.
And, you know, that's one question I have, is, is there money in the budget that we could do that without, you know, taking out a fund balance or stuff, if there are ways to find it? Because some of our kids may not can afford the seventy-five dollars.
We, we looked at it the other day.
I guess that that's one of the testing.
Yeah, we paid for every kid that picked the class, we're looking at about twenty grand is what we're looking at.
And, um, you know, I, I do think that the rigor in those classes should be higher, I agree with Tim, um, you know, and, um, the, the pass rate is obviously low anyway, in the ones that test, in my opinion, and that should be our goal, but that's higher, along with the number that tests. And what I understood, Dennison is just part of the pass rate, was getting the kids to actually take the test.
Yeah.
You know, um, but.
I think paying for the test is a huge piece of.
But, um, you know, and, and there's some other things that we're going to talk further on, that in this agenda, of things, you know, we heard what Ms. Winfrey said, and, and I can assure you, this, this board's concerned about the morale, and concerned about our staff and our teachers. And, um, you know, there's things that I think that we can do, um, to try to. And, um, you know, there's things that I think that we can do, um, to try to, um, further increase that. But, you know, we're gonna have to retain, um, good teachers and we're gonna have to put qualified teachers in pre-AP classes. And if what some of these people are saying, I have to know as a parent, that, that's a little bit of problem. And part of these people leaving and having left, and a lot of it's before Dr. Adams' time, so don't even think I'm pointing the finger at him or the teachers that we have, but you can put people in, you can set people up to fail. And I think we've been guilty of doing that. And I would really like to see us focus on being the next Dennison myself. I'm just one board member, I don't think it would even take board action, but I want you guys to know it's important to me.
Well, I appreciate that.
Excuse me, too.
It's important to all of us. Yeah.
That article just talked about those for me.
Yeah. Yes, that's right. Um, and, and I think reaching out to other districts who are doing well and in areas where we might not be is an important thing, finding that kind of some of the things there is, so.
I agree.
All right, last thing I have is our academic success. This is not Taper anymore, so any last questions on Taper or these county comparisons? All right?
I got one, do you have another one? Do we, were we a comparison anymore with like districts? Yeah, demographics and, and-
That, no, that's already, that came around with the, um, initial accountability rounds. Would you like, I mean, and that would be in, that would be-
I don't understand that.
Turn on the distinctions, I mean, we can give you who our comparison group is.
Yeah, if you don't mind, and how we compare to that. Did I miss that?
I think you missed that.
Okay. If you don't mind saying that to me.
Be nice if you could educate the media on that and what distinctions are and how you're weighted against who. And a lot of times we report, um, that weighting and these schools that locally aren't, you weighted against each other. So-
It's an order, just tell them. It's an, I-
I would have to confirm, this is-
It's a sample, it's some sample.
It, it's a, it's a sheet we can send to you super easy, it's a different one for each campus.
Yeah.
So.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay, so the last one that is our, um, academic success, and I told y'all that I would show you what we're doing, how, how we're working to make things better. And last time, some questions were brought about is, you know, what are you doing for the individual child and that type of thing? And I thought, well, this would be a great opportunity for me to share with you what the coaches do with data digs. So you've got just a pretty much step by step laid out for you and there was a handout, this handout that's coming around. I apologize for, I was a little late on clicking the button, get in board book, and I apologize for that, but we've got you a copy each. There an extra one over there? One more? Okay, so what we want to know is we do these data digs after tests. So, so step one is build and administer a common unit assessment. So let's say fifth grade math, they're all gonna take this common unit assessment to determine how well they're doing up to a certain point, and then after that, they'll do another common unit assessment. So after each one of these, we use Ediforia Aware and Lead Forward templates to run the data reports. And you're gonna have examples of all this in just a minute. Update student data tracking sheet, now, we showed you the student data tracking sheet earlier, so I'm kinda showing you how all these reports that we've shown you earlier work together for the teachers. That monitors individual student progress in comparison to last year's star score. So during a data dig meeting, so you may have all fifth grade teachers from, from, fifth grade math teachers from, um, Bailey in a room, and they're talking about the test results of this, cause they all gave the same test. And this is one way we can tell if all students are getting the same information, how they're being taught. Um, so first thing, during the data dig meeting, each question is analyzed. The questions on which students excelled are celebrated. So if you look at the next page, kind of while I'm talking, the questions on which students excelled are celebrated, those are the green ones, all right? And the teachers talk about what they did in the classroom to help students succeed on that particular teak. So we wanna talk about the good things that are happening. And then the low teaks, which are in red, are also evaluated. The teachers discuss why they think students struggle and make an action plan for how to reteach and review that particular teak. So low performing teaks are retested in the following unit. So we don't just move on and, and not make sure that we're making, that we're getting these, uh, pieces of information across. So that's what this attachment four A and four B does, it describes what was above. Now, attachment A one is our academic growth. I showed you this one last month, or the month before, starting to run into each other. Um, this is a report from Lead Forward. This allows the teacher to see how many students would have received one point, that's if it's in blue, I ha, I mean, green, a half point, that's if it's in blue, and zero points if it's in red on star growth measure. So if this had been the star test, that unit assessment is scored as if it had been the star test. And so a teacher can take a look at this and determine how their class would have come out and take a look at these numbers. Then on attachment A two and A three, if you look at the next two, this is actually one spreadsheet and they wanted to, uh, the coaches, as they helped me put this together, they wanted to show you the whole spreadsheet, I said, cause it was like five pages long. I said, I think two pages is enough. Um, if you note right here, the, the students' names have been covered up as we ran this off. And this is only a partial spreadsheet. But as you look across the spreadsheet, you can see, um, the, the teachers' names and the test that was given, percentages that were given, and it's even color coded. All right, so these work in conjunction with attachment A one, the one prior to that, having the green, the blue, and the red, and allow the teachers to see which students. So the first one just shows them the score overall as a class, and then this one digs down to the individual student and the color that they would have scored, if it was one point, half point, or zero point. So we don't have any, any T, any students' names, we do have the teachers' names on here, and this is a partial list, okay? Then they can target who did not maintain academic progress in small group work or one-on-one remediation. So after they've gone through a data dig like this, they're able to then go back to the classroom and take a look for, at each student, if that student was going to get a point because they scored high half point or zero. And then they really then pull small groups together. Everybody in the room that got a red may have some extra small group instruction after other students have gotten busy starting on some work when they do group work. So this is kind of the thing that, um, the coaches are helping them with. Now, what they've added to it this year is, then you look at attachment B one, the last one, it's the exact same report as A one, but with last year's students. All right, so this is kind of helping teachers to understand, this is same test, but the students from the year before. Same report, same test, different students. So if I'm a teacher, I'm looking at this and I'm able to say, is my academic progress getting better? Or is it getting worse? And then evaluate the type of instruction that I gave based on last year's report, this year's report, same test, same report, different students, to see if my instruction is going the direction I need it to go. Self-evaluation. And then they can talk about it in their data dig. So we're doing things like this, and I've, I've been here long enough. We're doing things like this to kind of dig down. We're really trying to dig deep and, and pinpoint and target. So writing, reading, math, science, all of those are going through this measure. At every common unit assessment, these meetings are held, then teachers are able to go back with some great information to reteach students as needed. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Shergill.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That takes down to six C, discussion only attendance in the room, just like?
We've had a lot of data, so that's just sort of quick info. If you have any questions. That is as of August seventeen, because did my own friend some of those lots of stuff, you're ready?
I have some questions. Try to call you. Yes, hey, when we talk about this, and I just wanna make sure we're on the same page, cause we keep talking about lack of funds over the last few years, since I've been here. You know, money's gone out. When I look at this right here, and the way I understood this first year, Dr. Adams, tell me if I'm wrong, you and I wanna talk about this. Yeah, we're eighteen, and for us to watch our money, we're eighteen students up for the year. But at this time, like, compared to this time last year, we're still forty-three and a half students down. When we talked about that, I remember at the two thousand eighteen graduate class, I had two hundred fifteen kids in it.
Uh, it was on that trend, the trend report I showed you to kind of drag by class.
We had, we were about, the difference where we'd lost sixty kids was the difference in the size of our two thousand eighteen graduate class to our kindergarten class. Kindergarten class coming in is smaller. So I got, that, that's two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars based on six dollars, six thousand dollars a student for us, right? So that's two hundred and sixty-one K. And so I got, that got me to looking, and I've never done this before. So I'm going, man, where, where's our money at? Where's our funds at? We talk about, we need twenty thousand dollars for this, or we need fifteen. When I got to looking, we go back, our current enrollment is of January the ninth, twenty-four thirty-five. January the eighteenth, it was, or January the eighth, two thousand eighteen, forty-three and a half students. I went back, uh, two thousand sixteen, which is three years, we were twenty-seven oh nine. That's minus two hundred and, and I've got this for everybody. That's minus two hundred and seventy-four students. Cause this is my, when we start talking about that, there you go. That, that equals to one point six four four million dollars.
Yeah, kid, I mean, loss of students is where-
But that's per year over those three years, cause we don't have it anymore, we lost those kids. We go back to two thousand fourteen, which is five years ago, we're minus four hundred and seventy students, which is two point eight two million. We go back to two thousand eleven, where two thousand nine to two thousand fourteen, I thought it was really ironic that we only lost seven students over those three years. This is straight off of the minutes of the meeting, does that make sense? But if we go back seven years, that's two point eight million. If we go back five years, we're down four hundred and seventy students, it's two point eight million dollars. That's a big number. And when we start talking about raises and stuff, that's something to me, we have to take into account and look at it that way. Cause there, we're talking about two million dollars here not too long ago, there's two point eight right there because of losing students.
Right.
Right? Um, agree with me?
A, a hundred percent. I mean, that, I think the million dollar question always comes up when you try to educate people on finance, is students are our commodity, that is, that is our business, so.
That's the business person, that's how I'm looking at it.
And, and so when you lose that, obviously funding is lost. And just like these programs that we want to incorporate and run, I mean, when you lose money, that comes out all the way, all over the place. Even though, what, eighty percent of our budget is actually salary, there's still another big chunk of it that we're using everywhere else.
Dr. Adams and I have talked about that, we just came here, if I remember right. And that, cause that was a number that I was really concerned about, cause I know Tasby Trainer, they tell you about eighty percent is where you wanna be at.
Yeah.
And at that time, I think we were at seventy-six or seventy-eight percent. So we were really good there, but we gotta stop the loss of students.
No, a hundred percent. I mean, that, people will say, well, how do you put more money in your budget? I said, kids.
Yes.
Kids, that's, that's how you put more money in your budget. So I agree.
It really got me, just thinking the last three years is two hundred and seventy-five kids.
Well, and it was the same thing when I looked at that trend report, it was that same thing looking from, and I think I went back, maybe eleven, twelve? I can't remember off the top of my head.
Two thousand eleven's as far as it lets you go back in the-
Yeah, and I think I had done that same thing, kind of going back through, I think, Taper reports and just looking at enrollment trends. Being, not being from the area until third year in the area, I, I know we talked about businesses, I think some of the larger industry that-
I brought up that, that we lost-
That had gone as well.
Two businesses.
Yeah, and so the impact of, of that, but no, absolutely. More kids equals more funding.
Thank you, Ms. Wett. Takes us down to item six D, discussion only of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, calendar options, Dr. Adams?
So the, the district will begin looking at, uh, the calendar for next year. And from an instructional standpoint, we have to meet seventy-five thousand six hundred units. So the number of days doesn't necessarily, uh, equate as far as when we had to start and stop, stuff like that. Coming up for different holidays and, and stuff, we, we want incorporating the calendar, we'll begin looking at those options. Now, uh, an option that was brought to my attention, uh, is something that Athens ISD is incorporating for the nineteen, twenty school year. And that is a four-day school week. So, uh, again, that's not something that I, I have researched. Could give you an in-depth evaluation on what that process looks like, or, I mean, obviously, uh, in looking at some of the articles with Athens ISD, I mean, they went through a very extensive, uh, planning process with school personnel, with the board, with the community. And, uh, we found, determined for their district that that was the best option for them.
There's only a few schools that's done it too, right?
There's only, uh, you know, I, I know that Athens is doing, I don't know of the other ones that are, that are in place right now. There may be some, uh, I just don't know that. I know that the Athens, using a high school model, they're looking at about eight to four thirty every day, uh, for a high school student. And they will start school that first Monday in August, and then they will get out, uh, right at the end of May. And they'll go Monday through Thursday is when they'll go.
And the time, I think they're like four fifteen, sorry, the time? Yeah, I, it show, I've seen it, they were showed their schedule.
They had one.
Four pretty long days, yeah, four pretty long days.
He was excited about it, back he was.
Again, just, just some options, i- i- is it a savings for the district? I don't, I don't know the answer to that, uh, from a, from a facility standpoint, from a energy standpoint, from a transportation standpoint. I mean, there, there'd be a lot of things that would have to go into play, uh, to look at that and make those conclusions. I guess my question to you is, is that something that you want me to even look at or investigate as we move forward, looking into the night or twenty?
Dr. Adams, I, I spoke with, uh, somebody that's in administration there at Athens at length within the last two weeks. There wasn't much saving on the transportation side. The reason they did it was to, to recruit better staff.
Better staff.
Yes, sir. And their teachers are excited and their kids are like, now, the one, the one where it hurts you is, uh, K through five.
Sure.
That was their, that's where they met resistance.
Yeah, I talked to them.
Uh, there were some savings, there's a little bit of saving in everybody, he, he said, you thought you would get transportation saves, but because of their demographics, they have to run some, but they have to do some stuff on Monday, or on the day they're-
They get off.
They run, yeah, but there is some savings in utilities, there is some savings in, in staff and things like that. But they, they did it to, to recruit and get better teachers.
I heard, so I heard the same thing, I was from chairman, I didn't administer, tell me the same thing about that, but they also, the one told me that they also felt like they would grow through the population. Cause there would be, there would be, and that's what I heard down at Tasby too, was it, and they, the way I understood, they were gonna go Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, they'd be, have Sunday, Monday, so they have Saturday, Sunday, Monday, was what they were discussing, I don't know if that's what they wound up. They thought that that would also recruit them some kids from around the area.
This is multifaceted, obviously, and you would study all that. I disagree with the transportation savings, because I know from back in the day when gas, when diesel was higher, this study's already been done, and it was, of course, fuel was five dollars a gallon, and, and so it's obviously a magnified amount, but there was a significant savings in transportation with the amount of miles that our buses run. Um, so I expect that there will be savings there. Um, obviously, wear and tear on the equipment, twenty percent less and all of that, that you would factor into the study. But, you know, one thing that I know no one wants to talk about, but with the, the, a- as difficult as this year's budget was, of how we had to cut, just to try to balance a budget, with less students, that's gonna compound. Some of the, obviously, things we've talked about in the past, ways to, to fix that, um, you know, looking at high school schedule and everything else, which is not popular to talk about, but I can assure you, what the finances and future budgets is something Dr. Adams is gonna have to talk about. Um, if you went to a four-period day, obviously, you could go to a traditional eight-period day, four days a week, and those kids would be in each subject over an hour, um, which alleviates some of Christie's con, I mean, Sheila's concerns. But would you still achieve the same savings that, you know, we had to talk about in the past budget meetings? Um, and that's a question that you obviously would look at. But I, I don't know how you could change from a, a, a block to a modified block and save four hundred thousand dollars and not change to a four-day week and, uh, uh, eight-period traditional and not save the four hundred thousand dollars. So one would think that there's that much savings. And then, to me, your teachers are getting a, another day off a week for the same pay. And, um, even though they're working a little longer those days, they get a three-day weekend, so their morale's better because, even though, even though they're working a little longer every day, if you ever get to the point that you have to change to a modified block, I can assure you- If you ever get to the point that you have to change to a modified block, I can assure you, their morale's gonna be very low, and it's probably something we're gonna face. So this is something that, this is a way that we could make them happy with a shorter work week for the same pay, maybe even with the savings might, just this board member. You know, let's just say there's a half million dollar savings out there, that's enough to give every single employee you have. You give your teachers a thousand dollars across board-based pay raise, which, you know, I would love to see us give them the savings that we do make, if it is what we decide to do. That's my vision for it. So having said all of that, I mean, I think that it would be a good idea to.
I'd say that, I, I, we have no, there's everything to gain by exploring it and nothing to lose, other than some time, it looks like to me. And I don't mean this bad. I'd kinda like for us to be in the forefront of that. Do you know what?
I don't doubt you would recruit better staff, we talk about pre-AP and AP teachers and trying to solve the problems, Ms. Windbury. Talking about, uh, uh, bringing in quality staff for what we've lost, and, I mean, we've had staff leave and go to Oklahoma now, I understand they're going because.
Social Security.
The dual retirement type situation, but they're also going because they can work four-day school weeks. You know, so we would be able to recruit people with our pay versus what the paper report shows versus state average, or ten thousand dollars below state average. I mean, that's something that we can offer someone that other people aren't, that maybe they wanna come to work here.
I believe you'll get, I believe, I still believe too that you recruit kids too.
I do too.
Okay, you start talking about this, hey, I've only gotta go to school four days a week. Okay, especially at the high school level, the junior high level, you know, now, I will tell you this, and this is what Tim maybe heard the same thing. The person at Athens told me, the only thing they was concerned about, that there was, at the lower levels, hey, now, I've, now I've gotta have a day of, uh.
Childcare.
Childcare, okay. One of the things I know that they've discussed, I don't know how it went, but he said that they would discuss, was even opening up a childcare. To the school for those people to come to, and it was a revenue source.
Yeah.
Just something to look at. I don't know, I didn't get too particular, cause I don't wanna sound like I was being too nosy.
They talked about that.
Yes, they talked, we went to a class, and they talked about this whole thing.
And you would have childcare on Fridays, but obviously, a four-thirty day, I mean, you don't have child, after-school childcare four days a week, so it's almost a wash for people.
And we did that. You see what I'm saying? But John Q. Public is not dealing with it every day, the first thing they're gonna say is, hey, I've gotta get childcare for my second grader. Okay, well, that's what they're looking at over there, is doing it in the school, having, having, yeah, tutoring, they're turning loose in the gym, I mean. I think they have everything to gain by exploring that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll start gathering some information and talk to some districts who are incorporating that. We'll let Dr. Chadwick get our district improvement committee together and scratch their brains as well.
I would question, I would question the, uh, quality of education that the kids are gonna get, four days.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know that I would have.
They're gonna suffer.
Uh, I mean, with, with, especially people in Texas, I don't know that I would have the data to support that.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, is this what's best for kids?
Yeah, and the thing about this.
Education, learning, is this what's best for kids?
Sure, I don't think there's any way we could get this for next year, that's not what I'm saying, let me say. And then you'll have some schools around here that has some data for one year, this is how it helped us, but I know there's not gonna be a lot of data in Texas, cause.
Oklahoma's had that for several years, I don't know how they feel about it now.
I can tell you.
With their kids. I know the teachers probably like it.
Just me, a, a block schedule versus the traditional schedule, kids going to school hour plus a day, four straight days. At our secondary level, high school level, I think it's better for kids than what we have now.
I'm gonna tell you this, when we came over, I didn't like it, but it would take me long to learn.
I mean, they're still gonna get the same number of instructional minutes, that doesn't change.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
So I think, I'm just, for me, I, I think we ought to take a look at.
All right, it takes us to six E, consideration approval, PSC agreement, Dr. Adams?
So I had some folks from PSC come by last Monday, we kind of toured the buildings again and looked at some, some different issues and, and, uh, kind of set some dates to move forward. Uh, one of the things that they did leave me with was the, uh, the architectural agreement, just the initial agreement to kind of get started as far as looking at. Uh, information that we already have in place, analyzing that, and then moving forward with, uh, some community meetings and stuff like that, so. That agreement is there for your approval?
Dr. Adams, the only thing I was, I'm in favor of PSC, um, when we put this committee together. I just feel like we need to let them get their feet on the ground and get running, and then see if that's something that they need before we spend that money. That's just my opinion, sir.
I was gonna ask, when we, when we talked about this, that I think you was, we talked about, and, and, and some of us had reservations about going, because of some things that we'd done. Reservations of going until you'd been here about a year, which we're not close. But we were talking about that it wasn't gonna cost anything right now, and I don't, I, I don't believe that we ought to be spending money until we show the committee what we got. And I, I was taking this, correct me if I'm wrong, I was taking this as, okay, if we go this far, this is what this is gonna cost. Did I take that wrong?
I mean, for, I mean, if they, if they come in and continue to.
Yes.
What we have, so that when they meet with our folks and us, that they, they have educated.
Sure, sure.
Information to provide.
Right. I, I think personally, I kind of think we ought to let our committee meet, meet first. And I don't think we ought to be getting out in front of that committee. We're gonna let this be their committee, it needs to be their committee, and let them decide if we need to. Because you're talking about spending possibly a little bit north of thirty grand real quick, thirty-five grand real quick, possibly. And like, one, one of my troubles, this was my trouble when we started this, they're talking about nine grand for a facilities assessment. What about the one we just spent eighty-something thousand dollars on?
And again, and they, and they have all that information, uh, and they've actually reduced that, that nine to five.
Well, I would think so.
But I mean, they, you're, you're also asking them to come in and take the word of somebody that they did everything adequately and correctly. Uh, so it's basically them coming in and putting their stamp of approval on the studies that they already have in hand from WJE and WRA. Saying, yes, we agree, or, hey, we don't think they did this right, or, you know, I, I'm kind of speaking for them.
No, I understand, I understand.
Uh, but just in meeting with them last night, what their thought process is as we move forward, or if we move forward.
But that's what I'm saying, my understanding was, that that wasn't gonna cost us anything for them to take a look at our studies, I thought that's what he said that night. Why else is it gonna cost us now three grand?
Well, we, we asked both groups that, and they both assured us they would look at them, so.
Yes.
Even though I'm in a, I'm, I believe that we should approve it, I don't agree with approving it with that study in there, because I feel like we've done plenty of studies.
I do too.
And, um, I don't have reservations of, of, you know, um, we're not approving twenty-five thousand, we're proving up to that. So if they only use fifteen hundred of it, and the committee sends back, this community's not ready for anything, then, then, you know, it's cut off. You're not, they're not saying you have to pay them that, that's, it's up to that based on expenses.
Yeah, I understand, but that night we, the night we approved this, we talked about, hey, there wasn't gonna be any expenses, at least until the committee met.
Well, and we.
The committee had met yet, right?
Well, and, and part of the assumption was that typically, that these people don't charge you unless they get the work.
Well, obviously, you wouldn't have to watch the video of the meeting to, if you were an architect, to get concerned about whether or not you're working for free. After listening to the discussion that night and tonight for that matter, so I'm not surprised that they want to be compensated. I am, I was at first alarmed that they didn't say that it would be refunded in the event that they ever do work for us. Which I was glad that Dr. Adams got them to go back and, and change that language, because, um, you know, it, 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 something happens at two years from now, we go for a bond. And it passes and they get the design work, then they should've done that work for nothing, and because of all the work they're gonna get from it.
Sure, and that's what they're saying, we'll do it for free as long as y'all give us a bond. I'm just gonna say this, I'll go on a, meet for this. I'm, I make a motion to table this until our board meet, until our committee meets and says they're ready.
I'll second that.
You, you won't, you don't wanna table it, cause you bring a player in the meeting, you just take no action.
Take no action.
That's.
Just take no action, until our committee meets and discusses it.
I know that's what they told me, that's not how I've been trained. You can table it, move it to another board meeting.
Typically.
But we can, we can take no action, I'm, I'll make my motion to take no action.
It's the same thing.
Maybe it's second one, but I'm not, I'm moving that we take no action until our committee meets, and then let's revisit it.
Well, our, our committee, hopefully, they're meeting within the next week, because our committee needs to get going. I mean, we need to get this committee formed, they need to get into motion, and then we can start doing things like this.
And I know when I met with the architects, I mean, we talked about committee meetings and, and when that person would be and stuff, uh, you know.
Well, I hope it's soon.
We had kind of set a date for later than next week, but I, I have not reached out to anybody to, to set a date until we finalize what was gonna happen tonight.
So basically, what they're saying is, is the administration's gonna have to have that first meeting without an architect there.
Absolutely.
We need an architect there for the first.
Yeah, I mean, really, if we're, if we're taking no action on these guys, I mean, I need to call them tomorrow and tell them to just kind of hold off on everything.
Absolutely. It's gonna be our committee, I mean, we need, this committee needs to get going.
Well, and I think we made it pretty clear at the last board meeting, or I know I did, where I said, I changed, and, and I'll be honest, I changed my vote that night, cause I was fully intending to vote no. And because we said there was no money gonna be spent.
Me too.
It was just a dis, we were just discussing and getting this started, that's why I made the motion to, to be okay with it.
It was okay as long as we weren't okay in any money.
And I actually said that, I thought we talked about this during the hiring process, that we wouldn't gonna do this until you'd been here, we wouldn't gonna get started on this, I thought we did that too early.
If we start, if we start this, we're starting off on the wrong foot with the committee. We, we're forming this committee to let them even decide if we're, if the community is even really ready for any of this, they could come back and say no. They could come back and say yes, and if they say yes, then we call and we start getting bids or, or a contract on how much it's gonna cost for them to come and sit in on these committee meetings. I think we're putting the cart before the horse if we do it this way, so I agree.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Dr. Adams, was I able to get ahold of you? You said it for twenty-first?
I do.
Twenty-third?
I do, as soon as possible.
Wouldn't do the twenty-third, cause that's next month, and it's a holiday.
Okay, yeah, okay, how about twenty-fourth?
What do we say?
I understand the reservations.
Third, second, third, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, thirty-fourth.
I understand the reservations of you four people and what you're trying to accomplish, and not faulting that whatsoever. And really, to fight about when we hire an architect, whether it's now or thirty days from now, um, is, um, not important to me to sit here and argue about it. I personally think that, um, you're putting off the inevitable, and if any person at this board re, meeting, or in this room for that matter. Doesn't think we have significant facility problems that have to be addressed, um, they're crazy.
Nobody's working that.
But to put it off a month and to start the first meeting and make sure that that's the direction the committee goes, I don't have heart.
Then what's the point in the committee? I mean, the, what's, what's the point in having them come in and tell us their direction and what they wanna do, if that's what we're wanting? When we're gonna go ahead and say, well, we've already hired this, they've already started this, and they've already started this. My issue's the money. I voted for these people, I've, I've talked to these people two years in a row. My issue's the money right now, I don't wanna spend the money, and I'm not gonna spend the money.
I wanna say this, I'm definitely for Park Hill and Smith, but I just don't agree with starting committee, we need to talk to them yet, we're already gonna tell them what they're gonna do.
Okay, so hypothetically, the meeting, committee meets in two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
And after.
Hey, they need to meet tomorrow, they should've met yesterday.
Two hours of discussion, they agree, even though that many people will never agree on what to do, they agree something's got to be done. Then you can't move forward without one, and we'll come back next month and look at it.
That's right.
And, uh, then, then you have to spend money.
And, and that's fine, if that's what the commi, the community.
Cause people don't work for free.
If that's what the committee says, then I'll be fine with it.
Nobody's asking for, nobody's asking for free, but I don't think we're doing right by speaking until the committee has been spoken to and let them study it, I mean, that's what we formed them for.
Mr. Richardson, we have a motion on the floor and second it, but Dr. Adams, I'm gonna try to get ahold of that committee and see if they can meet the twenty-third.
Do y'all have all their contact info?
Yes, sir.
I thought we were gonna say get a list on committee members too, if we didn't have.
We did.
I have a question for the attorney.
Do you get to add, to add a name?
I have a question for the attorney, like, does, does it require?
I didn't get the add-on.
To, you want to take no action?
No, you were correct, you would do it one way or the other. Another possible compromise we might look at would be to see if, uh, Park Hill would agree to waive their fee. We're talking about small dollars, we kind of hit a political impasse. It might be that they might have some flexibility on that, if that's the whole of it.
Well, they did a little bit.
They, yeah, they moved a little bit.
They changed it a little bit.
They, they might waive the whole development piece to get started on this thing.
And I'd like, I'd like to say this, be real clear, I'm not, I don't think, I'm not hearing anybody else, nobody has a problem with Park Hill and Smith, that's not, that's not the problem whatsoever. And we're, I'm not necessarily saying it's a problem, I just don't like the message we're sending the committee.
That's fine.
So do we need to make a motion on whether the committee meets or not? Just let it go and, and the big committee meets and moves forward?
Let's go to the next, the agenda item, no action on that. Six F, consideration approval of four-year investment report.
For the past quarter, the general operating CDs earned thirty-eight thousand nine thirteen twelve. The general checking account earned twelve thousand six thirteen twenty. Total general operating interest earned for the quarter, fifty-one thousand five twenty-six thirty-two. The tax party account earned one thousand three hundred thirty-three ninety-one. Total interest for the fourth quarter was fifty-two thousand eight sixty twenty-three.
Want to have any questions? Have a motion?
I'll move.
No, you second. Stone, any further discussion? Ain't none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven oh. Takes us down to six G, consideration approval of budget amendments.
The amendment in the amount of four thousand six hundred and eighteen fifty, to move funds from the revenue code into the high school band supplies. The amendment in the amount of two hundred and twenty-four ninety-seven is to move funds from the revenue code into, excuse me, high school band supplies. And the amendment in amount of fifteen hundred and three thousand is to change function, function from thirteen to thirty-three.
What is function thirteen and what is function thirty-three?
I've got NLFEO donation, NLFEO nation.
It's the one from Angie Tadler.
Well, it's, we had a donation, and it was put, that money was put into the revenue code, so we're just moving it to where we, they received it, into their sixty-three ninety-nine.
So we're putting the money where it was donated to?
Yes, to the mass supplies, and then band supplies, there's a little one there.
Understood.
Okay, I got it now.
And then for the fifteen hundred and three thousand, um, function thirteen, that's CPR training and AED supplies. And function thirteen is curriculum and instructional staff development, and function thirty-three is health services, and that's where it should be, in health services. All we're doing is moving the function.
Just moving money from one place to the other, cause it needs to be in the right place.
To be in the right place.
Since I have some knowledge on that NLF part, basically, NLF wanted to give the teachers a way to apply for funds to help them offset some of their expenses, um, and that's already been.
Actually, the lady that wrote this, I heard, Dr. She did a good job.
Have a motion?
She did, okay.
My commission.
Motion by Mr. Richardson to have a second.
She offered second in charge.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ain't none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven oh.
Just abstain.
Oh, just abstain.
Motion board president.
All right, we're taking care of six H, Mr. Six I, consideration approval, donation for Parker Elementary from Little Debbie.
So Parker received a, a award from Little Debbie in the amount of four thousand dollars right before Christmas break, too, he's on that campus, so we just need to approve for that donation.
I certainly move that we assess that donation.
I was there when they got it, it was so cute.
Mr. Richardson, any further discussion? Ain't none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Takes us down to six J, consideration approval, TAFD policy update one twelve, I think that's Dr. Adams.
Yes, I sent you the, uh, policy update Wednesday to look at. If you have any questions about update one twelve, so Miss White here can answer your questions for you.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion, except.
Motion by Mr. Richardson, have a second. Second by Miss Trama. Any further discussion? Ain't none, oh, yeah. We're gonna go in with the public in favor.
Sheila.
You got away too fast.
All right, takes us down to six I, consideration approval.
We're at seven now.
Superintendent's report.
Yeah, superintendent's report, seven.
So board election, this Wednesday, January sixteenth, is the first day that an applicant can file their application, uh, for the board election. That will take place through February the fifteenth at five o'clock will be the deadline to file that application. After that, we'll start drawing names for ballots and stuff like that, just giving you. And update the, the three positions that are up, we have Ricky's position, Kyle's position, and Tim's position. And then we will call that election, and our February, whatever, our, our February meeting falls within that timeframe, and call the election, so we'll call that in February.
And just to be clear, Ricky's is now a three-year term.
Ricky's is, they're all three-year terms, correct? Yes. Yes. Safety update, we had talked about the Raptor system at our December meeting, that system has been purchased, uh, it should be here, I would assume, maybe in the next couple of weeks. And then, we'll get some additional training, get those installed, and, uh, we'll have those, the ability as folks come in to run our IDs and, you know, just add some safety measures to, to guests come in the buildings. Uh, we also have, uh, another active shooter training session that is scheduled for February for our staff that are armed in the district to go through that process again.
The ones that are already armed?
The ones that are already armed, so they'll go through some more additional training for that.
This system, he's talking about putting in a.
I've seen it.
Putting in a tech, and it's, it's awesome, it'll.
Have we?
Like a scanner, drawing sauce.
Yes, yes.
Have we started to discuss when we're gonna have a second group yet, or?
We have, Mike and I have started working on that and touching base with folks and, you know, under process, yes.
How's the updates that we've done on the high school and the junior high as far as, um, the entrances, how's that, how's that coming? Has it, has any backlash about it, or any problem?
You had any backlash on new entrance or?
Kelly couldn't hear the question.
On the new, on the new entrance here, have you had anything, as far as complaints or issues?
Not a call, a person, nothing, anything, what happens?
Working well.
Appears good.
People gotta understand, you gotta do it.
Oh, yeah.
I was gonna say yours, I had seen yours.
First pretty cool we see on a camera.
Any further questions? If not, we're gonna take a break, but we will, uh, open session at eight twelve, we're gonna take a break. Then we'll be going to executive session, board with productive focus meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Governor Code, chapter five five one, chapter B and E, Texas Governor Code, section five five one, number seven four. Personal matters, employment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, resignation, retirement, duties, dis, dismissal, flake, and certain violation of statute.
Need M and M's.